And they went with the, and I say went with, um, out of the three options proposed, again, those were, uh, uh, expanding parking or formalizing parking on Park Street. Or, um, expanding Town Hall parking. Um, those were the two that I think they narrowed it down to. They removed the church as, as the third option. And they, they said, what makes the most sense to them is either clarifying or potentially in the future, expanding parking at Town Hall. Um, and as of now, no movement has been made, to my knowledge, on, on actual groundbreaking. Um, but I am looking into some signage that, that, um, they, they liked. So, um, just, just simple municipal parking signs that aren't the, you know, 11 by eight metal signs that just have an arrow in green. So we'll, um, we'll, uh, hopefully build some signs if that's the next step and put them up front so people know that they can park at, uh, Town Hall.
Great. Sounds good. I liked, I liked the plan that, um, that they chose. I thought that, that made sense.
Oh, I think, I think it does too.
Question, question, hi. Um, thank you for coming tonight. Um, but do you recall where the proposed parking would be here at Town Hall? Cause I did not see that plan.
I didn't either.
It would just be kind of towards the tennis court side, but it would really just be filling in some parking spots that it kind of bumps out already. I can see if I can find a map for you, but it's really the only a creation of a handful of spots. And then if, when you do get the electric vehicle charging stations, it'll kind of counteract that. So.
Right. So it's about five or so?
Big construction.
Okay.
It just sort of expands the, the police, you know, the parking to the, to the north where the police. Um, over on this, this side. Yeah. Not, not this side. Understanding that the east side. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the east side over near, um, the essential.
And they're, and they're planning EV stations there as well?
Uh, yes, yes. To my knowledge, uh, a handful of electric vehicle chargers.
That's great. Good. Marie?
Well, I was going to ask how many spaces this would probably make, um, but you already answered that. Um, but that's the only parking options that were addressed nowhere else in town? Or was this just the only thing you were looking at?
Out of the three beginning options, again, the, the, the problem that I believe is there is a lack of both knowledge of where people can park. Um, and I think that's the signage end of things. That seems like a simple fix, at least just to put it out there in a nice looking way. And then the other aspect was can we create, you know, a handful of spots and if we can, where? And the most realistic option ended up being Town Hall. And that's what the Select Board, um, agreed on.
And there was also, I think it was Mike who mentioned to me that, um, raising awareness that businesses, you know, having their staff not park right out in the prime parking. Did that was, did that come up?
Yeah, that, that came up in both of my presentations. Actually, I'm pretty sure that's usually how I led it. I would, I came up with the slide, what seems to be the problem here? And I would go into historically, some merchants park on the street in front of and closest to, uh, their stores, often leaving fewer options for their customers. So that, that's a big part of it, but that's, that's a deeper rooted, um, issue or, you know, characteristic of the town than just trying to dig up a, a couple creative parking spaces. So.
Isn't it in the end though, really about pure numbers? I mean, I know for convenience and maybe for the business's own advantage, they would have their workers park elsewhere, but isn't elsewhere just again, taking up pure numbers? We actually need to find physical space for more.
Yeah, that was the idea. Let me share my screen here and just show you briefly.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So this was from the second presentation to the Select Board. And in blue, you see new parking and it's really just a handful of spaces. Um, and that's.
Let's take the basketball court away and make.
Oh, nope.
Nobody plays on it anyway.
Send us court on point. The basketball court. And Mike is a basketball player.
So she'll say it interfere with the town employees parking because they park on that side?
No, no, it wouldn't. Um, and that would again be up to the Select Board, probably the Town Administrator as well. If they want to designate some sort of municipal parking section or maybe, um, you know, additional signage, that, that would be a next step, um, if this were to occur.
Did anybody look into parking down along the Park Street playground area?
She did mention that, yeah.
Is, yeah. What was, what was the, they just didn't want to do that?
Yeah, that, that wasn't, um, that wasn't the option they picked. I don't remember their exact reasoning, um, besides them preferring the municipal lot.
I have a question.
Yep.
Was it brought up at all with having timed parking on Main Street or for like a two hour slot or a three hour slot, like there used to be? And the, the police used to go, someone would go and mark a tire to say, you know, how long they've, they've been there and then get a ticket if you've been there longer than two or three hours?
Yeah, I, it was briefly discussed, I believe, but again, the, the enforcement becomes, you know, the big ticket, no pun intended with, with, and with adding that.
I've never, I was completely unaware that they ticketed. I've never seen them or experienced.
John Veyron's time. Yeah, a long time.
Oh, okay.
That John Veyron. Kate, you probably didn't have your license yet.
I did.
I got my license plate. You're way too young.
Sounds like we've had limited results there.
I think it's a good start.
And I had, I had my screen up. I'll share it once more.
New spaces?
The signage.
My spaces is not. Any thought of Sam's Garage? Knocking that down and making a parking area there?
That's privately owned.
I thought the town owned that. No, no, Monday owned it.
No, Brett Monday bought that.
Sam's Garage.
There was talk about, there was, there was talk about that at one point, um, when Pam still owned it. And then Brett.
I don't mean Hall's Garage. I mean Sam's Garage.
Oh, Sam's.
Sam's up on one, on seven.
Oh, that.
I mean, it's not big, but it's a lot. The town owns it?
It's too far. People won't walk that far.
There's no sidewalk there either. You'd have to put in a sidewalk, but I mean, we don't have any other place to park, guys. This isn't any other land.
Does it?
How long's that garage?
How long's that? They took it?
I assumed they, remember they were going to rent it out there?
You remember at regional planning, there was discussion about, um, you know, there was a discussion of planning and I think it was Nat said, there's a, research has shown that there's a distance that people will walk and beyond that they walk.
No, but if there is no other parking, you know, I mean, there is no other land.
Free parking.
Well, look in North. Would be the point of putting in parking if people wouldn't use it.
Because they probably would park if that was the only parking there was.
Yes, free parking.
And, and free parking and a sidewalk. I mean, just a thought. I haven't put any thought into that. I just.
Just from personal experience, we were just in Newport. We parked far, far away because we had to.
Exactly.
And it wasn't an, yeah, you'd rather park closer, but because we couldn't, that's not very far. Is that a quarter mile?
If you put a sidewalk.
Reach, that's not very far to go for people that are able. And if that provided 50 spots or 40 spots, I think it's, I, I didn't know the town owned that. That's significant.
And, and, and right next door is the theater.
And the theater's right there, right? I mean, people walk from the theater downtown.
Oh.
Yeah, but, I mean, I just wondered if anybody thought of it. Cause that is, that is land that the town owns and there's nothing on it. And there doesn't seem to be anybody, they've tried to rent it, I believe, and there doesn't.
I think there's a, I think there's a remediation issue there, as I recall.
No, but it didn't come back clean. I don't think it came back clean.
Build on, but you could probably put a parking.
Well, I don't know how town, I, I don't want to get too much into weeds, but since we're talking about parking, I don't know, I don't think there would be restriction. I know there's restriction for a new business to be built there when it's dirty.
Okay.
But I think towns are exempt from some of that, especially if it's only parking.
If it's paved over and parked. Yeah. I don't know. I just thought, boy, when you look at what land is available and what's being used on that land now.
Was that considered Kara? Do you know?
10 years?
No, it, it wasn't considered by me. I'll say that much.
Right. I don't think the town fathers have really talked about it or anything. I just thought of it. That's all. Well, in Northampton, you have to park out of the city proper and walk up, you know.
Sure. And just while we're still on the parking, this, if you guys can still see my screen, these are the two signs that I pitched to the Select Board.
Nice.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. And this, this one on the left. The circular one was the one they preferred out of the two. So I actually worked for both of these municipalities and I reached out to the Village of Pearcor, um, uh, village manager and just to see what kind of details he has, um, about the construction of it. So we can go from there.
All right. Okay. So that's parking and, um, and then, um, open space?
Open space, yes. So let me switch gears here. So I began with drafting the plan. The latest version I could find in existence is from 1978. So I can't copy and paste. Um, it's on typewriter. And so I've combed through that. It's actually been very helpful because turns out, um, there are a lot of things in open space that luckily don't change, such as geology, environmental inventories, uh, and the community setting. So if, if you, let me share my screen again. Did you see this little quick and dirty bullet point list from Jennifer?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see it. No.
Okay. Well, there's not, not much going on really. It's just sectioned off by sections and, and how it's going. Um, the plan summary, introduction, community setting are, are all in the works. Um, the red you'll see it requires public, um, participation. And that's really the next step for this plan. And I think, I think we're very close to being ready for that next step. Um, Town Administrator Mike and I have discussed, you know, getting, um, a group of people together to help me with this institutional knowledge, et cetera. Um, and as far as these goals and objectives, let me pull up my other sheet here. I started and I finished actually combing through the Parks and Rec minutes that I found online, just to get an idea of, of what's been, um, surfacing in those meetings. And I came up with a list, whether things on here are still active, whether they want to be active, whether they're done, whether they're completely off the list and don't talk about it. What's the point? Um, that's where that institutional knowledge will come from. And that's when as a consultant, I will lean on those volunteers for, for help. Um, and this was just to start again, to get some action items which, which end up as drivers for the updated plan.
Okay.
So it's, um, it's a very long document. It's not the most glamorous, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a great way to, to apply for grants, get grants and keep that green infrastructure safe and sound. So Stockbridge has a lot of beautiful open space and a lot of recreational opportunities. So it's really just figuring out what's there, how to improve it, how to keep it safe and how to expand it even.
That sounds good. That sounds good. Any questions?
Uh, well, in terms of open space, I mean, as far as a map goes, um, uh, it's out of date now, but, um, uh, but, but not so out of date as all that. Uh, but I worked for 10 years with Burcher Natural Resources Council, um, with the Stockbridge Land Trust to, um, do a, uh, map of, 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 of all of, of the town's open space, um, and its various categories and so forth. And which is, uh, in, 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 in instructive document. So, uh, you know, they are a resource that if we're going to go and revisit this topic, then they really should be, you know, we should really be checking in with them. They're, 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 they're quite helpful.
Absolutely.
I assume you, you have, you have their contact information, Kara?
BNRC, yes.
Yeah.
Good.
Good. Great.
Yep.
Good. Well, this is, um, this sounds good.
Yeah. And before I hop off, I'll share my screen once more, just to show you a fun map that we've, we've got already talking about the open space. So we create all these maps. Um, our IT manager, Mark, um, drafts all the maps. Yeah, Mark Malloy. Yep. And, you know, this one's just a nice colorful one showing the different types of open space and.
Question Kara, are you, um, are you looking at the, are you familiar with the BioMap?
Yes. Yep.
You're, you're looking at that?
Yeah, actually BioMap 3 just came out. So we'll be able to use.
When it came out with 3?
Yeah, 3 came out, I think on Friday.
Okay. And, and then the nature conservancy, there's sort of this, um, more regional, um, of mapping tools that, um, incorporate nature conservancy and, you know, sort of different entities.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can't remember nature's something or another. I can't remember the name of it, but that might, I'll take a look at that. And if I think that's relevant, I'll send you the link.
Oh, absolutely. Welcome.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Thanks very much. Any more? Last call for questions?
Uh, uh, can you, is, is this what you have? But I mean, can you share, um, at least, uh, 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 can you share that map that you just showed?
Oh, yeah. I, I can email, um, all of the maps.
That'd be great.
I think Jennifer has some too. I brought them down.
Yeah, I'll email them to Jennifer, um, and she can distribute to them.
Or if you just send it to the Planning Board, email distribution list, everybody gets it. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Kara.
So Kara, can you send us that paper though, about the parking that you had with the red? You know, things that you're working on and.
Yeah. Why don't I just send you the second presentation that I sent to the Select Board?
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Is that our jurisdiction or is that the Selectman's jurisdiction? The parking, the parking thing?
Um, it's, it's Select Board. It's the Select Board's jurisdiction, but I'm sure they're happy to hear from you.
No, I, I just, yeah, I just wondered if this is going to be our purview of.
Nat's Select Board.
Of making decisions on this or if it's the Select Board?
Yeah.
Oh, so. It's not a, okay. It's not a zoning by law or whatever. It's not a planning board thing.
It's par, it's parking. It's just parking. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks Kara.
Thank you Kara.
Thank you.
Okay, you too. Bye bye.
Good work.
Thank you. You too.
Okay. Um, Lake and Pond Overlay District is next. And Nancy, you wanted this on the agenda. So do you want to lead off?
Well, I was hoping that someone from the Concom would be coming to the meeting. That's why I suggested it before the.
Yeah. I think it's a little bit, why don't you, you know, tell us a little bit about what you're thinking? So, you know, we can get a better idea. And, um, and then we'll take it from there.
Because when, when we first talked with Town Council about this, she was all for it. She said that there wasn't going to be any problem. I had it, I didn't bring my note on it, but, and now the new note that we get from her says there's going to be issues with it. And once we put it in the bylaw, that it will be a joint site visit with them. So we all on the same page.
I printed this out.
I'm just going to read what she, so we get some clarity here.
She's gone. Maria's gone.
First one or the second?
Because the one that came from Sally Underwood. Yes.
Can we just, one at a time?
Could be the first one?
Can we just do one at a time so that, you know, people can follow along?
Sure.
Which one is it going to be?
So, so what, just to recap here, um, we, so Tom, so initially we had the two committees met, Conservation Committee and Planning Board. And there was discussion about transferring the Lake and Pond Overlay District bylaw to the Conservation Commission. And, um, the next step was that I contact, I touched base with Town Council and we talked about it here and, um, we agreed that's, you know, that's fine. And the next thing, I think Gary asked, you know, w- we, we'd like to have a vote of the Conservation Commission on this before we move ahead with it.
Yep.
So, um, I got in touch with Ron and Sally and, um, in the meantime, my timeline is probably not perfect here, but this is just kind of approximate. Tom LaBelle, um, had done research on jurisdiction and, um, and how that would play out. So initially Town Council had told me, yes, um, you can transfer this to the Concom. And then, um, Tom found, researched it. And if you look at the, you know, Fred, so this goes back to, to August, Wayne. So there's an email from Tom to Sally and Ron on August 6th. And he, um, he was looking at the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission, Commissioners Manual and found that there was wording that indicated that, um, so that zoning conservation bylaws could not potentially, um, go to the Conservation Commission. Um, and so he asked Ron and Sally to look into this with Town Council. Um, and this is, I'll just redo the wording that, that, um, LaBelle references. He said, um, I found the following information in the MAC manual, that's the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners Manual, um, quote, non-zoning wetlands bylaws slash ordinances. Um, there is discussion as to why non-zoning conservation laws are to be preferred to zoning conservation laws. Um, and then he quotes from a passage, a wetland zoning approach, um, is dominated by the State Zoning Act and must be administered by the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals or Select Board. So there's a jurisdiction issue in terms of transferring the LPOD to the Concom. And, um, when Sally touched base with Town Council, Town Council took another look at it. And indeed, um, you know, there is this problem here. So then Town Council, and we all got this email, by the way. This was, this is, this is, this is in your email box.
Read it out loud so we can hear it.
So, um, Town Council wrote back on November 7th. She says, hi Sally, it has taken me far too long to get back to you on this question, but I have found no easy way to get around the limited boards or officials that can be special permit granting authorities under Massachusetts General Law, um, 40A. We could seek a special act to permit it, which may make sense due to the overlap between the Lake and Pond Overlay District concerns and those under the Wetlands Protection Act and the local bylaw. The simplest solution would be to amend the Lake and Pond Overlay District bylaw to require that applications for special permits in the Lake and Pond Overlay District be submitted to the Conservation Commission in addition to the Planning Board, so that the Conservation Commission can provide comment and recommendations to the Planning Board. The bylaw already requires that special permit applications be submitted to the Selectmen for their comment to the Planning Board. Um, another option would be for the Conservation Commission to sit in a joint session with the Planning Board during hearings on special permits in the LPOD, Lake and Pond Overlay District, to provide comment and input that way. But ultimately the decision would rest with the Planning Board. And that's because of this jurisdictional issue with Mass General Law. Another option is to amend the Lake and Pond Overlay District to transfer some or all of its concerns to the Wetlands Bylaw or applicable regulations in the Stormwater Management Bylaw, for which the Concom is also responsible. But I agree that something should be changed because the Concom is the most experienced board on the concerns of the Lake and Pond Overlay District. And so that was from Donna on November 7th. Um, Sally wrote back, thank you, thanking Donna, saying it sounded to her like it just wasn't practical. Um, you know, so that's, that's basically the context and the history. Hi?
So why wouldn't either one of those be possible to do with the, um, to amend the LPOD bylaw to require applications for special permits to the LPOD be submitted to the Conservation in addition to the Planning Board? So we can all comment on it. Or conversely, to amend the LPOD to transfer some or all of its concerns to the Wetlands Bylaw?
So you're, that's the section that I just read Nancy. Are you asking?
I'm asking you, would either one of those be an option? Why Sally's saying that they're not an option?
Absolutely an option. Of course they're an option, but my feeling is that, um, I think, you know, in terms of the LPOD, the thing to, to think about is there's a lot that we could be doing under the LPOD. So that we're not, quite frankly. So what is it that, um, you know, what is your concern? Do you want, you know, what is it that you want to see happen that is not happening? You know, it's sort of the same as what we talked about with the sign by law. What are the goals? So I think, you know, that's where we start. And, you know, that's what I'm interested to hear because, um, you know, tell me what, what it is that you feel is, is not happening that you would like to see happen?
I think they are more qualified and more well-informed than we are about LPOD. The Conservation Commission is.
In what, what regard?
So they go to these all the time that, that, um, the wetlands things. I don't know about you, but I don't have time to go all over the world to take all these classes and courses to inform me about what I'm looking at. I mean, I know where, you know, the lines are, where they're not supposed to be tearing down, you know, so it's, the water is coming up into somebody's land or the chemicals coming off the roof. We all depend on the contractor coming us, to us and telling us that the percentage is correct, but we can't test to see if it's okay for them to be doing, you know? Is it really true that it's only 5% or 2% coming off the roof to come into the ground? And how do we judge how much of that runoff is actually going into the pond or the lake? I mean, it shouldn't, I don't think it should be us that are doing all that. I mean, we can't test all that and we can't do this, but it seems the Conservation Commission is more up to date. And they know what they're doing more than we do when we go to a site visit.
So what, so, so your concern has to do with the part of the bylaw that addresses conservation, soil, um, soil quality, stormwater runoff, um, that whole part of it?
Yep.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have any, any comments or thoughts that they'd like to, um, like to make? Marie?
I, I agree with what Nancy's saying, but especially now that the Concom has a, I don't know what is, what he's, his.
David Cameron.
Yeah, has someone to help him that knows this kind of information. But would it also make sense for the applicant? If they had one meeting with the Concom and the Planning Board together to present their case and they wouldn't have to go to the Concom? present their case, and they wouldn't have to go to the CONCOM, they can go to the Planning Board? Is it possible to combine that in a LPOD permit? I mean, would that make sense for those guys? I mean, because one of the other things that we talked about was the CONCOM says or thinks one way, and we kind of say or think the other, but we're not together, so we can't talk it out? And see what, how they feel, you know? We don't want to say something, huh, that, that goes against what the CONCOM says, or seems to, or question. I mean, I think the more we can work together, the better for both the applicant and for the town, and for the land. If we can, if we can sort of have the same kind of meeting and discuss what our, what our concerns are about anybody doing anything on, on land in the LPOD. I think it would be better if it was possible, and it sounds like it's possible, if the CONCOM would agree to have a combined meeting when we have an LPOD thing, instead of their having theirs and our having ours, and special, you know, they go have a site visit, we go have a site visit. We're all looking at the same thing in a different way many times. They're looking for different stuff, but would it be helpful? For everybody? I, I, I think that would maybe be a good thing.
Um, Liz, I know that you're a bird in your car.
Yes.
So, um, you're petanary?
Yes.
No, I, I tend to, I wanted to say, I was, I was gonna say the same thing that Marie is saying. I think it's, you know, we're not, we don't have the expertise that they have. I would like to know what their reasoning is behind things, and if we work together, it works out best for everybody.
Okay. Thank you, um.
My only concern would be just that, like, you know, setting up those kinds of meetings, it's, it's, it gets to be a large group, and who's running it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good point.
Yeah, I suppose we'd have to
Well, the, the last one that we had, I thought went well, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was
Yeah.
Yeah. Wayne?
That was joint.
My concern is the overlap of time. How often does Conservation look at?
What, can you, I'm sorry, I don't really know which
So that both committees don't have to if, if it can be one or the other, then why, why have it be both? And how often does Conservation look at LPOD issues? Almost every time that I can recall.
Mm-hmm.
This, I, I don't recall the wording of the agency that if we change should be looking at that. We allow it to go into a certain designation, then Conservation would be able to take it over.
Well, that was the
Amend the bylaw.
That's the point that, um, that Tom, Tom LaBelle sort of, you know, uncovered, is that, if it's a zoning bylaw, the CONCOM cannot take it over. So, um, you know, we can do some other things to, to accommodate this, but we can't just hand this thing over. I think we can, we can figure things out. But, um, let's keep moving along. I just, I just want to hear about the goals, and then we'll, you know, okay, this is what we want, and how can we get there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
If that, I'm not seeing it here. If that can be transferred into wet, concerns to the wetlands bylaw. So, is that a, is what Tom's saying, is that's a problem because of the makeup of each of the boards? And when it's zoning issues?
If it's a special permit, it cannot go to the CONCOM. It's as simple as that.
Still has to stay with us.
I mean, we can, we can
Bylaw.
Right, unless we change it, you know, we can work together. Um, we can do different things, but if it's a special permit, it has to be with us. That part
I think even changing the bylaw, Marie, that, that doesn't cure, that doesn't handle the problem of us being
Right, that's why I thought maybe when we
Permitting authority.
do it together with one thing.
Right, but evidently, that's a hassle.
So
I just would like to see the big, the best way to save two committees from being occupied with one thing. And if it's possible to, I mean, right now, we've asked that, uh, they inform us their likes and dislikes, and we've, same with them.
Well, we're not, currently, we're not even following the bylaw. So, the bylaw has very clear wording that, um, the Select Board should review. Um, we should have a recommendation from the Select Board before we hear the LPOD. So, you know, I guess what I wanted to do tonight was hear a little bit about, you know, Nancy wanted to talk about this, so I wanted to hear about your goals, and, um, what I think would be a good idea at this point is for us to, um, read that bylaw very carefully, go over it with a fine tooth comb, and then
Should we do that next meeting?
I don't know. Let's talk about the holiday schedule, but
Maybe in January, we could, you know,
So I think
bylaw and work on that bylaw.
Like, I'd like you to go over it, you know, with a fine tooth comb, so that we can talk about it, um, intelligibly. And, um, understand what is already there.
Right. So do you know what the guidelines that the Conservation Commission use when they have a site visit for LPOD? I mean, compare with what we have?
I, I, you mean for this?
Yeah, because they go to a site visit.
Yeah.
Same one, you know, a different one than we do, for the same place. So, what are they looking at when they go? Wetlands?
They're, well, they're looking at the, um, the bordering vegetated, um, buffer zone. And then they have, their jurisdiction, I think, is 200 feet. So, um, you know, they're, they're basically looking at, um, how the project is going to impact things like stormwater runoff. You know, is it going to destroy that sensitive riparian zone area along the, the edge of the lake?
I thought that's what we were looking at as well.
Well, we, we can look at that, and I do look at that. Um, you know, that's, that's
Repetitive?
Just a question, okay. Um, I just have the LPOD thing here, and one of the headlines is stormwater management. Now, did we turn that over to?
The stormwater management bylaw
Part is
So Marie?
We're not looking at that.
If I may, um, the stormwater bylaw is not part of the
Okay.
It's a separate bylaw.
Okay, so it's a stormwater bylaw that they're, this is still part of us, LPOD stormwater management?
Correct.
Okay.
So the stormwater bylaw was, was with the Planning Board.
Mm-hmm.
And that was like such a, so clearly a conservation bylaw. I have no idea how it came to the Planning Board in the first place. Um, so, that one, and I don't, that's, I don't think that's
Yeah, I mean, I was just looking at this and saying
To be transferred?
Um, it's a good question, and I don't think that, uh
I was just wondering if while we're looking at this
It's in the general bylaws. Let's see, stormwater.
No, I'm in, uh, page forty
Six.
Forty-six of the LPOD bylaw, and just one of the topics, the stormwater management, if, if we're looking at this all over, and I
Yeah, but Wayne asked a really good question. Now I just want to look at that. Is the stormwater runoff bylaw? Not a lot of definitions. So it's not, it looks to me like, um, permit process, um, stormwater permit shall be filed with the Conservation Commission. So it would have been a, it doesn't, I don't see special permit in here, Wayne, so that would be the difference.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd have to look at it carefully, and so I don't want to really talk without
And you said the Select Board makes their recommendation before we give them our recommendation?
They're supposed to.
Doesn't that, isn't that backwards?
No, because they're, you know, it's, it's, they're looking at the footprint. And it would be a really good idea for them to ask from them first. In fact, we have a special permit coming up in January. And I asked that we hear it after the Select Board, so that we can, we can hear, you know, what their ruling on it was.
Where is it in that bylaw? I don't see it in the bylaw about the Selectmen.
Can they give their ruling about our input, like, on this important information?
Um, yes, they, that, that part of the bylaw, yes, because they're just looking at the footprint of the proposed, um, proposed building.
Okay.
Um, it's sort of a, they have a narrow, a narrow jurisdiction. And, um, you know.
Well, we can pull it apart when we look at it.
I think it's important to, you know what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna send you all some of the relevant sections to review, so that we can, you know, talk about this in a more, with everyone being more, more fluent with the actual relevant bylaw sections. And I think, you know, I, I've been thinking about it, and, uh, Marie, I, I totally agree with you. Um, we've got a wetland scientist on, on, you know, on contract with the Conservation Commission. He's, you know, I mean, he was, he was a division manager for the
Yeah, yeah.
Western Massachusetts D E G.
Good, yeah.
Yeah. So we should, we should definitely tap into that expertise. I would love to. You know, so why don't, if everybody's okay with it, why don't we, I will send around the relevant sections, um, read it all carefully, and we'll have another, um, another good discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So next up, we have the holiday schedule, and, oh, you know, Gary's not here tonight, but I have his vote on this one. We're hoping that we can, um, um, not have a meeting on December 20th, and then meet again in the new year. And just wanted to hear what everybody
I already have it in my calendar.
Well
All you have to do is hit delete.
Challenge.
I don't know how to do that.
I'll, 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 I'll second the motion.
Is that a motion? Do you want to make the motion? I'll second.
Motion that we, uh, that we, that we, that we meet, oh, when, when would that be in January?
That would be January 3rd.
Fine.
Okay, so we will not, um, Carl's making a motion that we will not have a meeting on the 20th.
Second.
And we will meet on January 3rd, and everybody will be happy because they've been to
Second, Wayne's just gotta bring our
Yeah, oh, we have to, we have to vote on that.
You have to vote.
We have to vote. Hi Kate? Do you guys want to vote?
Hi Marie. Whatever.
Yes.
Hi Nancy.
Hi Wayne.
Yay. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hi Kate.
We don't have Gary here.
Carl.
Hi Marie.
Hi Nancy.
Hi Wayne.
Hi Liz.
Hey.
Hope you feel better.
Hopes everyone, Happy New Year.